Hello, everybody. Good to see you this afternoon. Really appreciate your joining us for a little town hall. We're trying to do this every couple of months just to check in with everybody, give you any important updates, and then also reflect a little bit on building the new reality and especially what it might mean for faith formation. And we'll have a presenter each time to kind of lead that reflection and then end with answering your questions. So we're going to begin with prayer. So Chelsea, our senior coordinator for youth ministry is going to lead us in prayer to get us started today.
Can you enable me to share screen, please?
Absolutely. All right, you should be good now.
Okay, can everyone see the screen? It says opening prayer? Great, thank you. Yep. Let's begin in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. So this is from 1 Peter 4. "Above all, let your love for one another be intense, because love covers a multitude of sins. Be hospitable to one another without complaining. As each one has received a gift, use it to serve one another as good stewards of God's varied grace. Whoever preaches, let it be with the words of God. Whoever serves, let it be with the strength that God supplies, so that in all things God may be glorified through Jesus Christ, to whom belong glory and dominion forever and ever." Amen. So we're just gonna spend a minute kind of looking at this. I think this is particularly relevant scripture for us as ministers. So you'll have fifty seconds to see how it's speaking to you. Okay. So this is our closing prayer. "Jesus, you have called us to serve your people by loving them as you love us. Give us the grace we need today to fulfill that mission. Stir up in our hearts the gifts of the Holy Spirit promised to us at our baptism. Give us patience, boldness, prudence, humility, and compassion. Give us wisdom, kindness, courage, generosity, and peace. We entrust our ministries to you. Work through us, draw close to us, speak to our hearts, remind us gently that all the good we can accomplish is only possible because of your death and resurrection. Amen." In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
All right, thank you, Chelsea. So I'm going to do just a brief kind of note here at the beginning, and then I'm going to kick it over to Deborah to do the first part of our presentation today. Just as a little context, folks, one, I'm just happy to see you all again. It's been a while, I think, since we've gathered like this. But one of the pieces of feedback we got over the course of the past year and a half or so is that people really do appreciate these opportunities to connect with the whole lifelong formation team and hear directly about updates that are coming out and then also be able to answer questions. So that's part of the thought process of doing this more more regularly. Today's focus is going to be on a couple of things. One, you may have seen in an archlink, a note on new guidance for when you have students entering your sacramental programs or youth entering your sacramental programs who are either not baptized at all and they're at the age of reason especially, or they're not baptized in the Catholic tradition. So we know that guidance just kind of went out. So Deborah is gonna kind of go over a little more into detail what that guidance is about, where it came from, and how you can learn more about really how to work with that document. And then later, after that, Brian from Vicariat 2, our lifelong formation coordinator, is going to introduce a reflection slash discussion around some themes related to the new reality that we're trying to build. We know that one of the questions people ask a lot is, you know, renew my church, the new culture we're trying to build, what does that even mean for faith formation? How can we even engage that as ministers of faith formation? And so each one of these town halls will begin, will begin to start reflecting together on topics related to that, so that we're really having that conversation together. And then hopefully there will be a good amount of time for any questions that you have, either for the office or anything we can answer. It doesn't need to be related to the topics that we addressed, although obviously it could be. The only thing I wanted to say myself in terms of an update is that next week, probably on Tuesday or Wednesday, but hopefully Tuesday, you should be getting an email that's a survey for youth ministry and religious education, child's faith formation for the Archdiocese. I just wanted to give you a heads up on what that's about. We really are trying to get more comprehensive data about what faith formation of children and youth looks like in the Archdiocese. So we'll be sending out a survey with questions, everything from not just the numbers of students in your programs, but also what publishers are using, you using. Specific questions about what is your sacramental prep look like? What kind of meetings are you involved in? And it's all this data for us. It's to help us understand really more deeply what faith formation looks like in the Archdiocese, and especially as we work with the Renew My Church team and the leadership and start making decisions about what would be most helpful for the future of faith formation. We really want to be going into that with a strong understanding of what it looks like now in your parishes and your programs. So that's what that's about. We'll get that next week. And there'll be contact information if you have questions who you can ask, but I just wanted to give you a preview of what that, what that was about. It's not an interrogation or an audit of anyone's, any specific parish program. It's really just to help give us a really comprehensive picture about what does child and youth faith formation look like in the Archdiocese of Chicago? And how can we support you to strengthen, to strengthen it going forward? So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Deborah, who's going to begin with our first kind of presentation on that baptismal preparation, that baptismal and sacramental preparation issue that I addressed.
Great. All right. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us today. All right, I'm gonna just kind of go through some PowerPoint slides to walk you through this new document that we've created. All right, you should all be able to see those now. So there we go. All right, so this new document is titled Sacramento Preparation Processes for Non-Baptized or Baptized Non-Catholic Children: Recommendations and Communication with Families. So as Kevin mentioned, I'm just going to be doing a very quick walkthrough on this document today, but I wanted to let you know that we're going to provide a deeper dive webinar on it on Monday, February 28th from 3:30 to 5:00. So I'll give more details about that at the end of my presentation, but just so you know, I'm just doing a really, you know, general overview today. All right, so from the title, right away, we can see that this document addresses two specific groups of children. So those that are not baptized, and then also those who've been baptized non-Catholic. And these recommendations are helpful for both school and parish faith formation programming. Additionally, with the title, we can see that this document includes recommendations for parish and school leaders, and also offers some tips for communication with families. So the context for creating this resource stems from various instances that the offices of Catholic schools, lifelong formation, and divine worship have all been receiving calls regarding situations when children have not been baptized in the Catholic Church. Enter the traditional grade levels for sacramental reception. I'm sure many of you have, you know, had these scenarios at your parishes. And then what happens is these children and families desire reception of the sacraments of Holy Eucharist penance or confirmation with their peers prior to being baptized and without proper formation. So this document is meant to just respond to those circumstances, and it outlines various recommendations to help parishes and school leaders anticipate and prepare for these situations in a pastoral manner with a uniform process and pathway for reaching out to families very early when they first come into programs. We want to note that these recommendations are consistent with current Archdiocese and policies and procedures for sacramental preparation. So these are recommendations. There have been no changes to any of the policies and procedures for sacramental prep and reception for children in these categories. So, you know, there's no changes here. It's just recommendations for parish and school leaders. So again, the Archdiocese's policies and procedures for the sanctifying office of the Church offers clear guidance for sacramental preparation and reception. What these recommendations do is offer practical considerations with reference to the applicable policies to help parish and school leaders easily navigate the situations that you encounter. And then these recommendations are guided by the distinction that processes of sacramental reception for children who have not been baptized and those who have been baptized outside the Catholic Church are distinct. They each have distinct characteristics. So that's guiding these recommendations in the document. Also within the document, recommendations are included for providing an inclusive and relevant catechesis for children who receive their sacraments outside of the typical school or faith formation program timeline, yet they desire to participate in sacramental activities with their classmates and parish community. And also within the document, we stress that collaboration among parents, parish, and school leaders is essential to ensure the communication of parish procedures for sacramental preparation are readily available and clearly understood by leaders and parents within the communities. I just wanted to note that in that sentence right there, the phrase parish procedures. So sacramental preparation is really, you know, for the parish to organize those procedures, and then schools really kind of just refer students and families to the parish with what's, you know, their procedures for sacramental prep are. And also collaboration helps to begin ongoing conversations with families about the nature of the sacraments and the importance of proper formation for living a sacramental life. I'm sure, again, many of you have experienced where families, you know, just want their kids to be, you know, receive the sacraments with their peers without really, you know, a solid formation. So those early conversations with families will really help in that area. As I mentioned, the sacramental preparation of children impacts both Catholic schools and parish formation programs. And so to ensure that we've considered the various scenarios, this document was created collaboratively between Melissa Link of the Office of Catholic Schools, Todd Williamson of the Office of Divine Worship, and then Kevin Foye and myself from the Office of Lifelong Formation. Then we've also sought feedback from pastors, catechetical leaders, and regional directors of schools, you know, and then brought that feedback into the draft document. And then to ensure consistency with Archdiocese and policies and procedures for sacramental preparation, the document has also been reviewed and approved by the Archdiocese and Episcopal Council and the Office for Canonical Affairs. So I'm going to walk briefly through the table of contents, which, you know, if you've seen the document, it's pretty straightforward, but just to kind of review that real quick. So the first part of the document refers to parish roles and responsibilities, and this includes parents, principals, pastors, and catechetical leaders, and what the roles and responsibilities are from there. All right, I gotta note that my screen is not sharing well, but I'm just gonna go with it. So the recommendations for principals, CLs, and pastors, see, that's gonna help for communication and program planning to help identify children in these groups and begin initial conversations with parents at an early stage. And then third, determining the proper process. Oops. Okay, so there's two distinct processes to be aware of. So children who have not yet reached the age of reason are to follow the procedures for baptism of infants. And then the children who have reached the age of reason are to follow the catechuminal process for full communion with the Catholic Church. So that's kind of detailed within the document. Continuing in the table of contents, the fourth section is on guidance on making catechesis inclusive and relevant for children who are not preparing for a sacrament. So this section encourages the balance between honoring sacramental formation of children and then the pastoral realities of working with families to help foster a sense of belonging for the children as they go through the catechuminal process. The fifth section is for children and families who are participating in the children's catechumenate, where we offer recommendations to engage in conversations early and often, and to include children and families in sacramental preparation events. And then finally, the last section of the document refers to the Archdiocese and policies and procedures for reception into the full communion of the Catholic Church for children of catechetical age. Oops, sorry. And those are all hyperlinked within the document. So the section on the catechuminal process for full communion into the Catholic Church outlines processes for the two groups of children. So the first being those unbaptized children who are of catechetical age. So they should be welcomed into a children's catechumenate program, which follows the RCA framework and takes place in addition to the school or parish faith formation program. Then the sacramental celebration is full initiation in which the child is baptized in conjunction with their confirmation and reception of the Eucharist. So that's the proper process in that scenario. And then for the children baptized in another Christian tradition, they should also be welcomed into the children's catechumenate, which follows the RCA framework and takes place in addition to the school and parish formation program. And then in this case, the sacramental celebration is the reception of baptized non-Catholics into the full communion of the Catholic Church in which the child is received into the church and then confirmed and receives the Eucharist at the same time. So that was a really quick run-through of the content. So what's next? As I mentioned, we have this webinar on Monday, February 28th. Myself, Melissa Link of Catholic Schools, and Todd Williamson of the Office of Divine Worship will all be at that webinar to, you know, have a deeper dive into the document. We'll walk through the details of it, provide time for discussion of parish and school scenarios, and then address specific questions about the document. The registration and questionnaire will be sent out this week. For this webinar, we've got a few questions we'd like you to answer ahead of time, just to give us a sense of what's going on at your parish, what your struggles are, what successes you're having, just, you know, so we can anticipate situations and be ready for the discussion. So that's going to be going out later this week. And then also, the offices of divine worship and lifelong formation are exploring additional ways that we can collaborate and provide more resources for you regarding children's catechumenate. So that questionnaire will also help us, you know, to assess what your needs are. And then also at the webinar, if there's certain things that you, you know, are in need of for your parish that would help you with children's catechumenate, please bring those ideas to that as well. And then in the meantime, if you'd like to review the document, and if you have questions prior to that webinar, you can reach out to either Melissa Link for schools, Todd Williamson for sacramental policies and procedures, or me for, you know, religious ed faith formation programs. So I'm gonna stop sharing, and I apologize for whatever glitch I had going on. That seems like pretty common things these days. So I apologize for that.
Thank you, Deborah. As Deborah mentioned, there will be a more in-depth presentation on this to really go into it. But if you do have immediate questions, you will be able to ask those at the end after our second presentation. Brian, are you ready for us?
Oh, am I ever. Thank you, Kevin. All right. So hello, everybody. I'm Brian Ermanemick. I'm the lifelong formation coordinator in Vicariat 2. It's really nice to see so many familiar faces on here today. We are talking about building the new reality, and I will start by apologizing to several of you who are very far along in this journey of the new reality anyway, and have probably heard a lot of this repeatedly. And so, but we're gonna start right at the very beginning and sort of all move forward together over the course of these next several town halls that are scheduled. So I'm gonna begin also with some slides, and I am just as PowerPoint inept as, you know, the next person. So, you know, we'll see what happens here. All right, so we're gonna start with the standard slides that every Renew My Church presentation has to have, hands down. So the Renew My Church three imperatives are make disciples, build communities, inspire witness. So that the purpose of, the purpose of a parish is to invite, accompany, form, and send missionary disciples. That this, that this this imperative is done within the context of vibrant life-giving communities, and that this vision of sending missionary disciples is to inspire witness and to realize fullness of life in the life of the world. So you've probably heard these three imperatives before. Renew My Church also, sticking with the three-fold picture, has three phases. The decision and discernment phase, which is the sort of structural discernment piece that gets so much attention in the newspapers. The operation transitions phase, where we move from a decision of, if there's a decision to unify, or if there's a closing of a parish, or if there's some type of, any type of collaboration, there's that operations transitions phase that brings the parishes and the communities together. And then the final phase of building the new reality, how do we make sure that fifteen years from now, we're not in the same position again, looking at dwindling numbers, dwindling vocations, dwindling resources? How are we thinking about what are the needs in the world, and how are we as a Catholic community responding to those needs? And so in the course of building the new reality, there are several priorities that we work on, but we do it in a particular order that we think makes the most sense for our parishes. This is, this can be adjusted based on where communities are at. But as we look at this approach to vitality, it normally follows this general pattern, starting with building common vision, moving into evangelization, moving into adult formation and leadership empowerment, and then looking at moving on to the rest of parish life, whether it be children's ministry, or liturgy, or service and outreach, or whatever that may be. And so today, what I thought is, since we're beginning this conversation, we'd start with this first piece of the puzzle, okay? This building of a common vision of renewal. And so I'd like to start by saying that there is a distinction between vision and mission in this, in this sort of renewal work. Mission, we can sort of point to Jesus in Matthew 28, you know, "Go therefore, make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, teaching, preaching, yada, yada, yada." So that's the mission of the church. It's what we do. We make disciples, we baptize, we teach. These are, these are things that we, as a Catholic community, do. Vision is a little different. Vision is, where are we going? And why are we going there? All right, so, so we, you know, so all parishes have this sort of common mission, this Christ-centered mission. But the vision of where are we going? So if this is our mission, how are we getting there? Where are we going and why are we going there? And I'd like to offer to you that, that the vision of building the new reality, the vision of Renew My Church is this journey of discipleship, that each member of the community of faith in a parish and outside of a parish, in the geographic area of the parish. Our vision is that each person, each child of God, is on this journey of deepening their relationship and their discipleship to Jesus Christ. And these, these names are taken from Evangelium, but this idea that, that faith, that this faith journey has different thresholds. So you can use this, you can use Sherri Waddell, you can use whatever you want, but that there are thresholds of conversion that people journey through as they, as they grow deeper in relationship and discipleship to Christ, from sleeper to seeker, seeker to disciple, disciple to missionary, disciple. And so, and so our vision for our community is how do we help our members walk farther along this journey of faith, farther along this journey of discipleship? And now that, that vision looks very different, depending on the unique community that you're in. So the vision of St. Josephat Parish that I belong to will probably look a lot different than Our Lady of Mercy a few miles down the road. This will probably look a lot different from a parish in the suburbs, which will probably look a lot different from, you know, name your parish. And so part of this process is for each parish community to name their vision in light of Christ's call, Christ's mission to each of us. All right, vision. This basic journey of discipleship. The caveat of this vision of discipleship is that only engaged disciples can bring those who are less engaged or disengaged to relationship with Jesus. So think of a swimming pool, right? You got a deep end of the swimming pool, you got a shallow end of the swimming pool, you got the stairs leading into the swimming pool. You got a lot of people around the side of the swimming pool. Someone who's on the side of the swimming pool and who can't swim, can't walk somebody into the swimming pool and set them off into the deep end, right? That's not gonna go very well. Only people who are comfortable swimming in the deep end of the pool can come out, can grab someone who's on the steps, or someone who's, you know, sunbathing on the side, and walk them into the deeper water. And so similarly, in faith, only someone who's already along the journey can come back, come alongside somebody and walk with them deeper into relationship with Christ. And so as we think about vision, we think about the fact that in many cases, it requires a change in culture, a change in the way we act as church, act as parish communities. And I want to posit you that there are three particular culture shifts that, that move us towards a vision of a community of missionary disciples. The first is a culture that prioritizes evangelization. So I think about, I think about the the parable of the ninety-nine, the lost sheep, you know, the ninety-nine are hanging around, one goes missing, the shepherd drops everything and goes and looks for the lost sheep. Today, it seems like the reverse, doesn't it? Or at least that's what Father Cardinal Cantala Mesa would say, is that now we have one sheep in the sheepfold, and we spend all our time trying to nourish and care for that one sheep, and we don't actually go out and look for the other ninety-nine. So in fact, in our approach to ministry, we need to put a bigger focus on the ninety-nine that are not in the sheepfold, that are not gracing the doors of our church. And we have to be confident, just like the shepherd is when he goes out to find the lost sheep, that the sheep that are in the sheepfold will continue to grow and be engaged in the sheepfold themselves. We have to, if to reprioritize our thinking to look at those people who are outside of the sheepfold. A culture that empowers leaders. I went to a graduate school at Boston College, and one of my, one of the favorite, one of the favorite issues that were always raised about the woes of the church was clericalism. And if we could just fix clericalism, then life would be really good in the church, you know, if priests just relinquished their, their control over things. However, when we look at parish structures now, the power of priests and the desire that, oh, the priest does everything, has been replaced by the priest and the staff do everything in many cases, and especially in parishes that are able to afford a big staff. And so this idea that there are a few select people in leadership that are responsible for nurturing and catering to the needs of the people who come and sit in the pews is still very much alive and very present today. And so if we are really going to live out of our baptismal call to be priest, prophet, and king, to be leaders, then empowering a community of leaders is important. Yes, it's the leaders that are able to go out of the sheepfold and look for others. It's the leaders that are able to get out of the pool and invite somebody into the deep water. It's the leaders that are able to come alongside others and journey with them deeper into discipleship. So get, so trying to get out of this mindset that it's the staff and it's the priest's responsibility to do all to do all of the things, and we just have to sit and receive. But in fact, each of us are called to take on leadership. And then finally, moving to a culture that accompanies others in conversion. And we are the worst in the Archdiocese of Chicago at being a culture of accompaniments that leads others into conversion. We are the best at creating cultures of programs. There was parish transformation, there was Christ renews this parish, there were Catholics come home. We are really good at running program after program after program, just trying to find the silver bullet that brings people back into the community. When at the end of the day, the culture shift we need to make is that programs do not bring people deeper into relationship with Jesus Christ. The relationship of a disciple to a disciple, or an aspiring disciple to an aspiring disciple disciple, is what brings people deeper into relationship to Jesus Christ, that we need to be more intentional about having real relationships with people, which makes leadership all that important. I, you know, when I was the director of evangelization of the parish, at my last parish, I couldn't be in relationship with all 150 people engaged in an entry point experience. I had to have a team of people that were able to reach out one-on-one and accompany people along the journey. So these are the types of culture shifts that we're looking for when we talk about having a vision for missionary discipleship in the life of the community. So I've talked for 10 minutes, and I want to give you these last five minutes to reflect a little bit for yourself. And then, as as Kevin said, you know, there'll be plenty of time for questions, and we can wrestle and affirm and disagree with me as much as you want. But I'd just like to spend these next five minutes and just have you think through these questions as it relates to your own life and your own ministry. So take a couple of minutes, if your camera is on, feel free to turn your camera off, jot down some notes. So first question, in what ways do I communicate and lead out of a common vision? So how how does my vision of my ministry, how does that relate to the parish? How does that? How does that? How does that speak to to my ministry in my parish? Second, in what ways do I prioritize a culture of missionary discipleship in my ministry? And then third, what's one action step that I can take this spring to either A, better articulate and communicate vision, the vision of the parish in my ministry, or B, to make decisions in my ministry that prioritize the parish's vision? So this, the the second part comes from the idea that, like, many parishes have this vision statement on on the wall of the church. But we've long since forgotten how that relates to the day-to-day decision-making of our jobs. And so how do we, as as a as a as a as a person in leadership who is committed to this vision of renewal, how are we making decisions in our ministry that respond to that vision, that that take us a step closer to that vision? So anyway, so take a couple of minutes, turn off your cameras, think deeply, breathe deeply, and allow Christ to enter into this conversation with you. All right. Well, thank you all for for listening. Thank you for being good Catholics and being reserved in your responses. And Kevin, I'm going to throw it back to you.
Thanks, Brian. I really appreciate your presenting that. And I think, you know, folks, as we continue to have these town halls and other discussions, I think it's super helpful, I think, for a lot of you, depending on, especially, you know, where you are in the Renew My Church process, or what you've heard, just understanding kind of the thinking underlying all of the renewal. And I think, you know, Brian really hit on something important around, in faith formation, this idea of culture change and who we're empowering as leaders, coming before programs and curriculums. And, you know, there are a lot of great resources out there, some better than others. But, you know, all of Renew My Church, we've always known that without that culture change, without that leadership development, you know, the best methods and the best programs and best curriculum, best resources can only get you so far. And I know that from talking to a lot of you, you know, a lot of the challenges you have, whether it's with parents that you're dealing with, or catechists, I mean, I hear so much about wanting to, you know, strengthen the spiritual life of your catechists, wanting to, you know, strengthen them in their discipleship, wanting to help parents kind of understand their own discipleship journey and understand the faith formation of their children through that lens. So those are the discussions that, you know, we can continue to have and will continue to have, and really align with what we're trying to do with Renew My Church. So we have about 20 minutes. I know there are some questions or comments in the chat, but also, so I don't know, you know, we're just going to do Q and A right now, so you can raise your hand, or you can put something in the chat, and, you know, it would be helpful if you, if you're called on or in the chat, you could let us, if it's directed at a specific person like Brian or Deborah, based on their presentation, it'll be helpful if you let them know, let us know who who it's directed for, towards, if it's somebody specific. But we really wanted to give plenty of time for you just to ask whatever you, whatever questions you have of us, of your lifelong formation teams, either on the content or just general something you've been wanting to ask. And if people can help me out, if you see any hands raised on the lifelong formation team, anybody?
Real quick, while people are thinking about questions they want to ask, I know some things came up about, you know, who received that baptism guidance document and that. And we had said that, you know, it went to all pastors and staff of the Archdiocese. I want to encourage you to even invite your pastors to that webinar. So, you know, that webinar is for everyone. So anybody that you think would benefit from it, please invite them to it as well.
Thanks, Deb. Yeah, I'll just note, that's always tricky, folks. I know you want your pastor to hear directly from us, but like you, your pastors get so many emails from the Arch and other people, so we try to put it out there. But, you know, we do also really partner with you to kind of flagging things for them that you can say, you can say, oh, this came out in ArchLink, you know, you may want to notice this, because it's just hard to get their attention the way that that you can, because you have that working relationship with them every day. We have a question about reposting the webinar info, Deb. So Deb will put that back in. This may be the first town hall we've done where we don't have a lot of pressing questions. And so there we go, Mary Ellen Harrington, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to touch base. I thought the document was written really well for the sacramental prep. Really useful, very clean, if not, it's nothing new, I mean, which I think is easy. I'm just going to speak to my own challenge, not just at the parish, but every parish I've been at, when there's been a parish school involved, is that there's often a challenge that the school the school struggles to to support the parish in that respect, that that's the path they have to take if they have been unbaptized or non-Catholic, or have or have a non-Catholic baptism. They're like, well, they're already in school. This should be, like, it should be almost like a currency. I pay you, you know, to be in a Catholic school, I should be able to get this. I think there has to be really lockstep support from the Arch on downs, off the Catholic schools on down, that we are going to embrace this. Otherwise, it's not worth the paper it's written on. And I feel like there's always tension with that, is that, well, we've talked to them, and they said, as long as they've been here, you know, and information here, they don't have to do that. So just, I guess I want to say, if we're inviting schools, I think it's really important for that to, that dialogue to be present. I think it's really important for the, that everybody at OCS knows, maybe not just Melissa, that that's going to be the policy, because that's where the tension comes from, is that schools call OCS versus the parish when there's a tension. And then they say, well, we got permission to do it this way, OCS. So I just hope that there's some dialogue on that, and there's some readiness to to respond to that. Otherwise, I mean, I don't care. If you, if I'll do whatever they, you would say to do, but I just want a single step. I don't want to have to reinvent it, or say, well, this was the policy, well, except for that one time. Is the policy, or is it the policy? So I'm hoping, like I said, maybe we are inviting schools to be a part of that. I'll just give an example of my situation. You know, the principal's often said that she feels, you know, kids feel excluded when we do this, or they feel singled out when we when we pursue this route. And this is the route. I mean, it's no different than it's ever been. So I'm just throwing it out there, and I hope we're in lockstep, and I hope that we're thinking about that, and I hope that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, no, that's really appreciated, Mary Ellen. And I think the two things I would take from that is, one, you know, OCS really has been a partner with us in this, and will continue to be there. Obviously, Melissa's our primary contact, but she's really going to work to make sure principals understand it, that their whole kind of leadership community is on board with it. But we can definitely reiterate that to her, too, that, you know, this was just really highlighted in this town hall, the need to really make sure that the schools understand how it works. I think that was the biggest barrier, honestly, to the beginning part, is even understanding what, you know, canon law, what arch policy says about these things, and trying to work with that. But I, you know, it'll be a continued process of working with them, just to make sure everybody's on board as best we can. Now, you're always going to have, you know, individual people who, you know, I'm sure will scandalize you to know that sometimes people will still find their way to get around arches and policies. But, you know, we'll do our best we can to work with people on that, and they are, they are really on board with that, because that's, you know, and they've on some other sacramental issues, been good partners with that, too, and connecting us with affected schools and parishes. We really, over the last few years, have been trying to strengthen that partnership, so that neither of us are operating in a vacuum. But we'll definitely reiterate that message to them.
And just to be on board, I'm not, except I'm not saying one office is bad, one office isn't, but the schools are bad. You know, that it's just sometimes there's a lot of tension. And if we're not all giving the same response, even though we have a policy now, it's a challenge. That's all I'm saying. So if we can just be aware of that, and if this is it, let's, then let's, it be it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Angela has her hand up.
Oh, Angela.
Thanks, Nick. Mary Ellen, I would just say, and, you know, for what it's worth, the role of a catechetical leader and the role of faith formation offices have changed and shifted over the years. So even though there's a, there may be a policy and a lockstep thing, we are going more and more and more towards accompaniment. And so even though there's a policy and there's one set of guidelines, there's oftentimes you're working with this family and this family, and so you have to be able to walk with that family, whether it's a school family, or a faith formation family, or someone who's not even involved in both. And and so increasingly, the role of a catechetical leader has to be one of pastoral associate and family counselor, and and and. And so I think that's something that the lifelong formation office needs to continue to be aware of as far as procedures and then implementation of procedures. Just an editorial comment.
Yeah, and I agree with you. It does, it is, every situation is going to be unique, it's require accompaniment. It's a lot of times, I hate to say it, it's more, it's, the parents want what they want, which is fine. You can normally work with parents on that, is if they feel accompanied, they kind of get past it. But there's sometimes tension, I think, with schools and parishes, because the schools feel like, well, there are kids, so we should decide it, and this one's getting it, and this one's not, and then it creates tension, because sacramental home is actually the parish. And so we're trying to to manage it one way. I think, and it often becomes a commodity, we pay this much for tuition, we should get sacraments, and we should get to pick when we get them. That's kind of what the challenge sometimes becomes, and every Catholic school gets us from parents about math programs, about social studies. It's just, it is what it is.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, so I do think, just to reiterate, I think as a starting point, just as much as we can do to help, at least as a floor, the schools understand that there are actual sacramental policies that the church has to follow, and that there is kind of a framework within everyone has to work with, within, and that both the parish and school should be beholden to, so that at least they don't get too far apart. And, you know, we can do whatever we want, that there, and the document really is, I don't know if you had a look, but had a chance to look through it fully, but accompaniment, pastoral accompaniment, it really is a big focus of it, of how do you accompany families while working within these guidelines? So you're not just saying no to people without recognizing their situation, or helping them feel included. And they're also helping them really discern kind of sacrament, you know, their sacramental readiness, what, what, you know, they do want for their family and what their child is ready for. So I'm sure Todd and Deborah will go, and Melissa will go further in depth at that February 28th. But that is a lot in the spirit of it.
I just wanted to echo everything that Mary Ellen said, especially with the school situations. I think one thing that would be really helpful, I know schools do a lot of in-service. I think if they had an in-service for, like, the administrative staff, or whoever does the registration, just so that they understand what we're doing, and that it's not that we're trying to exclude people if they're not baptized Catholic, or that we're trying to exclude people if they're not baptized, it's that we want to identify them early, as soon as they come, so that we can have somebody walking with them. And I think that that really starts with, more than anybody, whoever's doing those intakes, whoever's doing that registration. So if we could have some kind of a, even a Zoom like this, or some kind of an in-service specifically directed at schools for those people on the front lines, there are those first points of contact. I think that that would go a long way to helping us all get on the same page. And then just also some clarification. I come from the Diocese of Juliet, where we were like banned to use the term RCIC. And I know that that term is like bantered around, it seems like, here a lot. So just some clarification that, you know, if they are over that age of reason, that it's, it still is RCA, but it's adapted for children, right? I think that that helps people to see kind of that difference, you know, why what we're talking about is something that's different.
That is, Deborah, right, that's the language that that we use in the document, right, adapted for children?
Oh, definitely. Yep. And Dolly, I appreciate your comments. Thanks. I was jotting that down. Thank you.
Anyone else, anything on either of these topics we discussed, or anything else you're wanting to know from regarding lifelong formation office, or things related to things affecting your ministries while we're here?
Looks like Angela was raising her physical hand.
One more comment with regard to Renew My Church schools and parish identity is the notion that, you know, sometimes people on that sacramental journey, even though they have their children in their school, this, you know, a school may not be their own parish. And so, again, just, just the discussions of how that's going to look in the future as to whether or not parishes are the home for the sacramental reception, even though the school might not be the home where they're getting the formation. Just a thought that that may be something that will come up, especially with as many mergers in school, closings, et cetera, as there have been.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point. I know we've had discussions around that with specifically in the last couple of years with confirmation prep, and, you know, the parish really being the home for confirmation. But I, you know, especially in those first communion and reconciliation, I could see, you know, that continuing to be a question. So thanks for raising that. It's helpful to us, because Deb and I are often in conversation with Melissa about issues, as there is OCS's contact on stuff like that. So it's helpful for us to hear kind of what the concerns are and and challenges, for sure. And then another question, I saw it a couple of times, the copies for the slides used for baptismal preparation, will we get copies of that, Deborah?
Sure. Yeah, you're gonna, are we gonna send out a recording of the webinar?
Yeah, we can send.
And we can send them together.
Yeah. And we can include, I'm presuming, Brian, your Renew My Church slides as well, and we'll just send you all the materials from today. Great. Well, folks, and you can interrupt me if you have, it's hard for me to see everyone who has their hands up, so if you have something. But the last thing I wanted to say was, we're really thinking these town halls more this format of, rather than a laundry list of everything that's going on, like a deep dive in a couple of issues, one Renew My Church-related, and one more general faith. So that's kind of the format we're playing with. It seemed like there was some good engagement today on this topic. But just so you know, that that's the plan. But if you have other ideas, suggestions of how we might utilize this time every few months, you know, But if you have other ideas, suggestions of how we might utilize this time every few months, you know, you can either let me know directly, or you can let your vicarious LFC know directly, um, because we really want to make this time useful to you. Um, that was really the, the thinking of, of having a dedicated time at least every couple of months. That's really helpful to you in, in getting the communication and the information that you need, um, from, from the lifelong formation team.
I just had one more quick thing, um, that I know has been a point of discussion numerous times. Especially when we have these older children who are preparing simultaneously for, that, that are validly baptized, it's not baptized Catholic especially, so they're just coming into full communion. It almost needs to be a conversation with the bishops as well at these confirmations, as to how to incorporate that first communion into them. Because it is something that the children that have been preparing with them want to celebrate with them. So I know that's like a, a whole nother rabbit hole, but it is a discussion that we should be having with the bishops about incorporating that in the confirmations as well.
Great, thank you, I made a note of that, Dolly? Oh, sorry, no, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a double now, is someone else have their hand up? Or is it just me? Alright, folks, well, um, Mary Ellen, you have a Castleman, do you have your hand up?
I, I did, um, and I know that when this document first came out, I needed to read through it more carefully before I asked Deb a question, but, um, my question is this, we, we also have these scenarios in many, many of our parishes where uh, children will be baptized as infants. Uh, they will be enrolled in, uh, faith formations especially, um, to receive the sacraments of communion and reconciliation. And then the families do not return until maybe sixth or seventh grade. And then, you know, see, you know, it's the whole, we're only here for the sacrament kind of thing. I think it would be very helpful if there were some conversation around that. You know, it's, it's great to understand how to, um, to manage the, um, the right of, of initiation for children. But what do we do about these other, this other trap of people who just come for the sacraments? And how are we looking at that process? Because that's a whole other, um, mess that a lot of catechetical leaders have to try to incorporate in. I mean, is, are, should they be going into, um, an adapted RCA of some sort to bring them up to speed? I mean, it's just something to consider, um, down the line, because this is, this is, you know, obviously the elephant in the room for so many parish catechetical leaders.
Yeah, and I think, um, you know, not to, obviously not a, a question we're gonna address today, but I think this, even the format of this meeting has a good highlight of that tension of, you know, we have the baptismal document of just, there's stuff we just have to deal with today of helping people and making sure we're attending to things. And in those bigger picture questions, I think align a lot with what Brian was presenting on, that I think the first step is, you know, seeding a culture of evangelized families where they, there's a desire, actually, that they're not just wanting, uh, sacram, to receive a sacrament, but they, they have a spiritual, they've recognized a spiritual desire in themselves. And they, they want to be more deeply engaged in their faith and through their church community as part of it. And then you start building in those, those ways that they can, you can attend to those needs. But I think really without that evangelization and that leadership development, you know, we're always gonna be kind of working against the tide of what people want or think they want. And so a lot of it is gonna be a discussion of how do we help people, how do we help light a fire in, in people that attracts them to something beyond, hey, you know, I just want, you know, I'm here for first communion, yeah, and I'll see you at confirmation. So, yeah, it's definitely, that's, I guess, just to know that, like, we're definitely aware of it and it's definitely things that, um, that we are, that we are all, always in the discussion for faith formation and how we kind of see renewal and, and help, um, kind of build out people's engagement in, in, in these faith formation programs and sacramental preparation and beyond, you know, in the life of the church. Uh, Mary Ellen asks how often the town halls will be hosted? About every other month. So, well, that's our plan for now, is, uh, every other month. So the next one will be, um, April, right? Yeah, we have one, we'll, we'll send it out probably the next newsletter of when the April date is. Alright, folks, I want to be respectful of time, it is two o'clock. Um, really appreciate you being here, uh, with us and, um, you know, feel free to email follow-up questions and anything, either to Deborah or Brian explicitly on their topics or to me just in terms of lifelong formation or, um, what the office is doing or, or anything you'd like to see from us or the town halls. Alrighty, folks, have a good afternoon.